Well, good morning, everybody. This is the Delta County Board of Commissioners Special Meeting for August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the states.
Thank you. Ms. Robbie, do we have any additions or edits to our agenda?
We do. This morning, we have Chris Stewart here, as well as we'll soon have the sheriff here. We will not only have a fire update on LaRue Fire, but also turn the fire back from the state to the county. And so Chris will provide that documentation. In addition, County Clerk Terry Stevenson has added an item due to the recent understanding that the arbitrator has retired and, and timing wise, you all need to appoint a new name for that.
Thank you. Where do you want to start then? Order that. Then we'll prove this agenda as amended and open it up for constituent time. Does anybody in the room like to visit with commissioners this morning? Here's anybody online.
No.
Thank you. That brings us to Commissioner Business, Ms. Robbie.
First item, then, we are privileged to have Pete Blair with Blair and Associates here for not only the budget presentation, but a review of the two thousand and twenty-four audit. And Leona will also start us off with the management report.
Somebody turned it over to Pete because this is his management report. Yeah, so I'll like him and then I'll after Pete's done, then we'll do the resolution for the budget. Okay.
Well, I'll start off with the governor's letter, which is the two-page letter. It's before that management report that she just passed out. The kind of, this is for the board itself. We talked about estimates in the audit. We also talked about other issues. I put down here about halfway down that page that there were no new accounting policies. Actually, there was one. It was Gatsby one-on-one, how we actually, you know, we have compensated absences now. And the way that Gatsby one-on-one works is we will pick up more liability because the way they do sick time and everything else. So as we go through the audit, you're going to notice that compensate absences went up about three hundred and fifty thousand compared to last year because of Gatsby one-on-one.
Could you give us a definition on compensated absences? So we all?
That would be what you would owe employees for vacation time, sick time, or ETO time at the end of the year.
If they all retired at once.
If they all retired.
So it's an accrual of that?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll, I'll show you as we go through them. If you go down part of that page, we talked about estimates in the audit. We talked about this before. One of the estimates is depreciation expense. We don't know how long the life of that asset will, will last. Another one is estimate on the landfill closure, post-closure cost. I think now the estimate is up to about two point five million if we were to close out the landfill. And then if you got, we have some estimate costs on gravel. Uh, I can't remember what the gravel is. It was about two million.
And now, now the last two years, they've used the drone to estimate that. Whereas before, someone would go out to the gravel pits annually. So it's a better.
Yeah, I think it's better. They make pictures and they actually.
Do a volume metric on it.
Yeah, yeah. Which is interesting, but it works out pretty well. If you go to the second page, we ended up with nine audit adjustments with the same as the year before. A lot of those are accrual entries or whatever, but that's very little for a county of this size. So Leona does a great job with the accounting records. If you go to, I'm gonna skip to the next one. That management report, see if I can get my thing to kind of walk right into me here. I'm trying to do it off my iPad, which is in distance. If you go to the first graph, you're gonna see what it calls fund balances. And if you look at that first graph, you're gonna notice the first two columns there is actually the general fund. And the general fund did go down compared to two thousand and twenty-three. This was budgeted for. And the in two thousand and twenty-three, the general fund was about five point four in fund balance. It's just a little over five point one. A lot of capital outlay and other costs, whatever. If you look at human services, they actually had an eighty-one thousand dollar negative fund balance. It's now two hundred and seventy-eight thousand negative fund balance. We do about seven county audits and human services is really struggle as far as having a positive fund balance. And the reason is because you're, you're required to do that maintenance of effort and everything else. It just depends on case load.
In each county?
What's that?
In each county of the?
Yeah, most of them are either even or a little bit in a negative position. If you go through Road and Bridge, they actually went up a little bit. They went up about ninety thousand compared to two thousand and twenty-three. If you look at capital improvement, it went down from three million to about one point one million. All this was budgeted. These were finishing up capital projects. And then if you look at the American Rescue Fund, we had that money left over from the ARC. And we used all that money. I think that was on the jail system.
And the ARC funds had to be spent by December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four, or we would have had to pay it back.
Yes, it were fighting out, but a lot of people does not know that rule. So they may have some difficulties with that. If you look at the safety improvement sales tax, that actually went up about one point one million. And then all the other funds pretty well stayed compared to two thousand and twenty-three. They went down a little bit, about a million. All these were budgeted as far as what you were going to expand. If you go to operating revenues, which is the next graph, you'll notice that you budgeted pretty close to what you got. You budget, you always do on a conservative basis. So you budgeted in the general fund about fifteen million in revenues. You took in just less than seventeen million. The big difference in the general fund was sales tax was up, interest revenue was up. Sell tax was up about two hundred and fifty-five thousand. And of course, interest revenue was up about four hundred and fifteen thousand, which is pretty nice. In the past, those interest rates were so low that we really weren't making any money, but now with the interest rates being at four, four and a half, five percent, makes. If you look at the road and bridge, they pretty well were pretty close to what you budgeted. And the big difference there was H U T F and rental leasing. H U T F was about, up about a hundred and eighteen thousand. Human services, they always kind of budget a little bit more than what they actually get because they're, they're, they're doing that on a case load basis. And I thought that was pretty close. If you look at capital improvement fund, you budgeted about three point nine million. You actually took in about four point four. Again, that was probably sales tax. And then if you look at the safety improvement, sales tax, again, that was sales tax, and it went from two million to two point three. It's always good to budget for less revenues coming in, but you always have that money. If you don't, if you get. If you look at the operating expenses, which is the next graph, you notice like in the general fund, you'd budgeted about twenty point five million in expenses, ended up being about nineteen point two. The big difference in there was actually we had budgeted a lot more for general government. General government was down about one million. Human services, again, is budgeted on a case load basis. It's pretty close to what was budgeted. And then if you look at road and bridge, you budgeted about eight point eight, only spent about seven million. Again, a lot of those were road, cap road improvements. I think was the difference about one point two million. Capital improvement fund was, should be right on because we did this, this includes the supplement, and so it's right with the supplement. And on the cap improvements, I think it was all capital projects, and I think some of that was finished, melted gel.
It was the detention center because we didn't get the bid until January of twenty-four, the final, and we are budgeted.
And then again, the American Rescue Fund was just budgeting what you had in there to close out that account under the ARC requirement. And then the safety improvement sales tax, you budgeted about one point one. It actually was about one point two. All of this was capital outlay. Mainly all of the capital outlay.
Pete, on the safety improvement, both for operating and expense, is that pre or post-disbursement to the municipalities? After.
After, okay. I had to look at Leona now.
I know.
I knew she would know the answer. Final remarks, again, the accounting staff did not do any job. I'm still impressed how well Delta County does compared to some of the other counties that we do.
Thank you for staying with us.
And I'll leave it down.
We're very proud of the work these folks do.
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna actually go to the audit real quick and just go over a couple of it. Hopefully, I can tell you what, what page you're on. I'm gonna start off with page one, which is the audit opinion letter. And this is broken down into two sections. One is we give you opinion on the actual financial statements of the audit. And then if you go to page two, at that last paragraph, we actually give you opinion on the federal awards that go through the county. And we'll look at those real quick. Anytime you have federal awards over seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is going up to a million this year, you're required to do a single audit. So Delta County will probably always be there as far as a single audit. If you go to the next page, which is the management discussion analysis, this page is actually done by Leona. And then we helped her out with a little bit of it. But if you go, there's some highlights there. There's like three bullets. You might want to read those later on. Basically, the first bullet says that you exceeded your assets to see liabilities by about a hundred and ninety-two million, mainly because most of it is in capital outlay. It's roads and stuff like that, but then some of it's in cash. So we'll, we'll go with that. And then if you go to the next bullet, it talks about the actual government funds, which I think you get more out of that part. And we increased governmental activities net position by about two point five million. In two thousand and twenty-three, I think we increased it by about one point seven. So this one actually went up for the net. And then if you go to the last paragraph there, it says the county commissioner's goal is to keep at least about twenty-five percent in their fund balance to cover operating expenses, which is a good idea, and you're, you're way above that. So you're okay. We have seen some counties, not in the county section, section, but maybe the cities and towns where they're not quite up to that twenty-five percent. I'm gonna skip a little bit and go to page five. The bottom of page five, we talk about this net position. I said you had about a hundred and ninety-two million in it. Most of that's roads, infrastructure's done. So the infrastructure capital assets is about eighty-seven percent of that net position. Some people ask me why we put that out there. Well, it's a requirement for us to do that, but let's face it, you never go sell those roads. That's just an asset. If you go to the next page on page six, it actually gives you a graph there. And how did you compare it to two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-three? And in two thousand and twenty-four, total assets at the end will be about a hundred and ninety-four million. And in two thousand and twenty-three, it was about a hundred and ninety-two million for the government house. So it went up. And then if you look at the business type, the business type is your E nine-one-one in your landfill. Those are your enterprise funds. And that actually went up too from ten point five to about almost twelve million. And that's a good thing because part of your requirements on that landfill is you have to have enough set aside that if you closed out the landfill, you could pay cash or whatever to, to close that down. I'm gonna skip a little bit, uh, go page seven. And on page seven, I'm just gonna go to the bottom now where it says increase or decrease the deposition. As I said, we increased in net position for the government funds of about two point five million. This is on a full accrual basis. And on the business type activities, we increased from about one point three. Two thousand and twenty-three on the enterprise funds, we only increased to about fifty-eight thousand. So that was, that was a big jump in two thousand and twenty-four. So financially, the county looks a lot better in two thousand and twenty-four than they did in twenty-three. But you guys were in very good shape in twenty-three, so you're even better shape in twenty-four. I'm gonna skip. It looks like if you go to page twelve, we only have one debt really besides compensated absences is on that Caterpillar D, D R nine tractor, and I think there's three more years left on at least. That's the only debt that the county has. If we go to.
I, can I speak to that just briefly? That goes to a lot of good management techniques on behalf of the county that we are not in debt.
Well, I totally agree with that because what we're seeing is some of the other ones are starting to get up there a little bit. So. If you go to page fourteen, this was, and I had it highlighted, so Window had already asked the question, but I'll answer. If you go to page fourteen, about halfway down that page, you're gonna see where it says accrued compensated absences. And now for the government activities, it's about one point six million. And in two thousand and twenty-three, it was about one point two. So I said increased by about three hundred some thousand. And the way that this Gatsby one-on-one works, it just basically says, even though they may not use it or whatever, you still have to pick it up as a compensated absence. So it's gonna put a little bit more liability on some of the governmental entities. I'm gonna skip real quick. And I want to go to page twenty-two. This is the cash flow statement for E nine-one-one and the landfill. And if you go about halfway down that page, if you look at the landfill, we started out with about five point nine billion in cash. We ended up in the landfill with about six point nine million. So the landfill cash went up about one million overall. If you look at E nine-one-one, it started out with about one point one million in cash. It is now at one point five. So everything is positive as far as the outcomes. Now, this is a new state, statement twenty-three, I'm sorry, page twenty-three. This is Gatsby eight and four. A lot of people don't understand it, but we're gonna go through it real quick. This is what mainly, mainly not necessarily. This is what we're holding custodial funds for, for other governmental entities. This is a requirement that started last year. And basically, if you look at this statement, we were holding about one point seven million in cash for other entities. Uh, you got to bring accrued property taxes and all this stuff, and what it comes down to is deposition is zero. All we're doing is holding this cash for other entities, and we distribute it right back out to them. So there's really no there's really nothing to it. And if you look at the bottom of that page, you're gonna notice that through the treasurer or the clerk's office or whoever, we took in about forty-five million, and we, we, we gave out the forty-five million. So basically, good examples, like if we were collecting property taxes for other entities like the cities or towns, and then we're distributing it right back to them next month. I'm gonna skip a little bit. And if you wanted to, on page twenty-six, it talks about a little bit of those fiduciary funds. The treasurer's fund, she held about six hundred and fifty-five thousand for other entities. The clerk had about six hundred and twenty-nine thousand holding for either the state or whoever. And then for public trustee fund, it was about four hundred and twenty-four thousand. We talked about page twenty-eight. On page twenty-eight, at the bottom there, we only did one supplement to the budget. And that supplement's gonna be about one point nine million. Mainly all of that is in the capital improvement fund for that detention, detention cost. I'm gonna skip a little bit. If you go to page thirty-one, at the end of the year, the, all the funds being held, all the cash being held or cash investments being held, came just less than about twenty-six million. Most of them are all either triple A rated or they're, they're covered. So you have no problems as far as any of the, the coverage on that, that cash. I think the way that Delta County does it, the treasurer does it, she's very conservative on that. She's not doing anything. It's not conservative. It's all triple A rated. If you go to page thirty-three, the only major investments that the treasurer had was about ten million dollars in investments. Only, mainly that was with color trust or C-Save. And basically, they're all triple A rated. It's sort of like a money market account that a lot of governmental entities are doing. They're all kind of combining with them. If you go to page thirty-four, I thought this was the true, this is probably took the longest part of doing the audit. It's all bringing all the capital assets in when done for the year. The county did just less than nineteen million in capital assets last year. Uh, a lot of that was finishing up the detention center. A lot of that was, what's that, the miners' trail or miners' trail? And then there were some others that you probably would know a lot better than I do.
So one thing I do want to note is that with Scott's sheets being a public.
Worked.
Works first, then he went. He went through a lot of vehicles and heavy equipment and got rid of a lot of stuff that had been taking up space in parking lots, landfill areas, and in the road districts, and they took a lot to auctions and got rid of some old stuff.
That's totally true. In fact, if you look on that same table, we actually got rid of just less than two million in assets, which was probably a good thing because they, they weren't being used anyways.
So we have a good handle, I believe, on, on the vehicle and heavy equipment assets.
If you go to page thirty-five, as I said, the only long-term debt that the county really, they have really three. They have the one on the greater, or what is that greater, a little?
Cat.
A cat.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be paid off in three years. They have the normal compensated absence, which I said went up about four hundred thousand. And then they only have that post-closure cost on the landfill, which I said at the end of two thousand and twenty-four is just less than two point five million. And if you look at that two point five million, which is not a bad thing because I think at the end of two thousand and twenty-four, I'll look at it real quick. I think the county was just less than eight million in the landfill cash, had cash in landfill, about eighty million. Okay, I'm gonna skip a lot real quick. And I am going to go to the single audit. If you go to page seventy-five, we had total federal awards that I worked with this. This is a statement that the client is to provide to the auditors of what federal assistance they have. We check out that report, and we worked on it for a pretty good time, and we check out that report and make sure it's accurate, and then we use this. So at the end of two thousand and twenty-four, the county expended about seven point three million in federal awards. The ones that we selected to do the single audit, because you have to test twenty percent of your federal assistance. We selected the single entry point or medical assistance program. That was an interesting program, and I think that was the first time I ever selected that program. And I'm glad that Leona knew a lot about that, because she knew a lot more than I did on that program, and we got the information to audit that. And then we also selected the Airport Improvement Grant. And then we also selected this Edward Vernon Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, which really comes from the Department of Justice. We had no discrepancies or no findings on any of those three grants. They did everything that they were supposed to, and probably even did a little bit more than they had to.
Yeah, I gave Pete the numbers, but human services actually did the medical assistance program work for you.
And what's kind of interesting is when we selected the single entry point program, the state had already looked at it pretty thoroughly, and so, yeah, it was, it was interesting. But as again, uh, But again, uh, we had no compliance issues on any of the federal award. So everything was done properly and so. Overall, the audit, uh, financially, you're a lot better than you were in two thousand twenty-three. You spent some money on some projects that you were wanting to get done. Uh, federal systems, appliance testing came out great, no problems there. So overall, the accounting and everything came out really well. So I'm happy.
That makes us very happy.
Yeah.
The federal award totals went up and part of that was due to Matt James as well, being our grand administrator.
Any questions for Pete on this audit? Anything you didn't quite pick up on?
No, I don't have any questions. Um, just thank you very much for your thorough work and Leona and her staff, Susan, Matt, everybody contributing that, Robbie. Thank you very much for your conservative views on this and everything we like, and Leona likes numbers.
I want to, I want to say something, she did some, well, the whole county department, everybody did some good things. And then I thought was really impressive was the new internal controls. That you're doing on purchase orders and stuff like that. Thought that was pretty impressive. Uh, where everybody signs off on that, I thought that was pretty interesting. We, we looked at that and actually tested that and that was pretty impressive.
Pete, thank you for all your hard work on this and I give Annie and Leon and all these department heads a lot of credit for the hard work they do here. It's shows and citizens of Delta County are better for it, so thank you all.
Well, thank you. If you've got any questions, they'll give you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess you have to do your resolution.
Yes.
So you do have supplemental resolution? If you want to provide the detail.
Yes, um, we have. We have, uh, four budget adjustments for the year. The first one, um, we talked about earlier is the, um, capital improvement fund. Going from one point two five million to three point one three million. And that was due, like as, as I said earlier, the bid coming through in, in January, uh, after we had budgeted. But the cost was going to be and it came out higher than we, we anticipated. The second one, um, is for the health department. They received some unexpected, uh, COVID grant funds, which they used very positively. But that, you know, we receive money, and your expenses go up, so it went up sixteen thousand nine eighty-four. And then, uh, in, uh, twenty twenty-four, we received a surprise from Al Kamar. A grant to, um, help with some employee benefit type things. And we used it for supervisor training, which most of us went to and it was very positive. And so that grant increased our expenses. And then, um, the last one was an unexpected collision. Uh, that say we, we repair, we do the repairs and the insurance company reimburses. So the expense part, you know, is cut first and then you get the money back from the insurance. But that is why that expense of sixty-five thousand three hundred fourteen came through. And, um, insurance, the self-insurance fund used that then to third through insurance. Repairing damages and, and receiving insurance money back.
Any questions commissioners on this resolution for the supplemental budget? This is an action item and it'd be number twenty-seven.
Why move that we approved the supplemental budget number twenty twenty-five R dash twenty-seven? A resolution appropriating additional sums of money to defray expenses. In excess of amounts budgeted for the county of Delta, Colorado in the year twenty twenty-four.
Will second the motion.
Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we use two of these as the originals. Mike, will you use yours and mine? Leo. The dates wrong on this. Says July twenty-nine.
Oh, can you just?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Chris, if you want to come forward, we will, um, move into the, the fire discussion and then the transfer. Sheriff Taylor did have to step out, uh, for another meeting at nine. So Chris will be handling the, the responsibilities there. I just want to say on the record that, you know, Sunday. When we started this adventure with the Luru fire, you know, not only did, um, Chris step up like he always does. Uh, Lindsay was there, Jackie was there, Scott was there, Ted Cunningham was there, fairground staff was there. They flipped the entire fairgrounds in half a day to go from the county fair to a fire. Um, so it was a very much a team effort as well as search and rescue helping with the thirty-one hundred road. Just want to say last week, uh, again, there was a lot of things happening all at once and. I do know a few things slipped through the cracks, but overall, I'm very proud of everything that everybody did and, and certainly want to thank, not the fire control. But certainly our staff as well. So I just wanted the commissioners to know that and know that everybody went above and beyond.
Very proud of the work Delta County does with your leadership there, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Robbie. Um, so what I have this morning, um, I know Commissioner Country were out last week. But, um, last week on Tuesday, we turned the fire over to the Colorado Division of Fire Prevention and Control. It was still very active on Tuesday. Um, they were, that's when they hit it with a lot of the aviation assets and stopped it from growing. And we're very grateful for the support of the BLM and calling in those aviation assets and keeping it small. And not allowing it to grow to several thousand acres like the Lee fire up in Meeker currently. Um, the fire crews, as Administrator LaValle indicated, worked very hard last week. And got ninety percent containment on this fire in one week, which is remarkable. Um, they kept it to a hundred ninety-five acres. Um, it's officially, it's ninety percent contained and that means like I talked about last week, they're going around cold trailing, making sure. The perimeter and everything is cold to the touch. If they find hot spots, they have to address them, uh, around the entire perimeter. And then they'll work on addressing any remaining heat in the interior of the fire. So crews will be on site from BLM and contractors until that is complete. Um, but as of Saturday, the incident management team from the state of Colorado, um, demobilized. And they returned the fire to the command of the local BLM unit. Um, so it's a type four incident now. Um, and I believe there's still over sixty people assigned to the incident through. They get, achieve full suppression on the fire. Um, with the team demobilizing on Saturday, um, Division of Fire Prevention and Control Deputy District Chief Luke Odom, uh, approached. Um, BLM is going to be handling the, the final stages of the mop up. Um, and so we, there's no need for them to act as our agency administrator and on our behalf and cover suppression costs. Because, um, now it's just that, um, mop up. So they are asking for us to return the fire from DFPC back down to the county and fire protection district. That's Hoxkiss Fire District's area. Um, so effective twenty-three fifty-nine hours on Sunday, August tenth. Um, the fire will, um, he turned the fire back over to Sheriff Taylor. Um, and basically from now on out, we are responsible for our own costs, basically. We shouldn't have any costs going forward unless BLM and the fire crews say, hey, it's, roads getting really dusty up here. Can you bring a water truck up, wet down thirty-one hundred road, wet down Oak Mesa Road so that we're being good neighbors to the landowners and stuff up there. But that's something that the county would probably do any way and it's within our operating. Um, so it's not like we're going to be asked to pay for a portion of these hand crews or anything. The BLM is going to pick up the cost of these hand crews going forward. Um, out of that hundred ninety-five acres that burned, we have, uh, two acres on private property that burned. The remainder was all BLM.
Two acres.
Two acres. So. So the request is for, um, to authorize the chairman to sign the document to return control, um, from DFPC back to. Um, the county and maintain our own operating expenses going forward.
There's just a clarification, you indicated a time and a date in the past.
Correct.
Is that, are you asking the board to make that effective last Sunday or effective now?
Um, it would be effective twenty-three fifty-nine hours on the tenth, that's when DFPC requested it.
John, you've got something.
Well, a, a request is not a, an action. It's the action really at this point or is, is there a requirement? I, I don't know about the, I've not looked at the requirement of when that would, uh. When that would be, um. Essentially effective.
What they put on here, Delta County will be responsible for their own costs within the Luru Creek or Luru incident. Starting August tenth, twenty twenty-five and twenty-three fifty-nine hours through the entirety of the incident.
So it'd be a retroactive.
I, I, well, and that's why I say, I don't know who wrote, who wrote that particular language you're looking at. But I, I don't, it may not be an issue. Maybe the county has not had any, had any, um.
Should have not had any.
Between Sunday and now.
Been Sunday.
Probably more than we ever had.
Maybe we haven't, so maybe it's not an issue. I just think it's kind of a little interesting asking for a retroactive, uh. Find. Excuse me, something we try to avoid unless there's a good basis for that.
So, sounds like there is.
All right.
Any other questions, Chris or John on this one? This is an action item.
What is the action that we got there?
Can we see that?
Yes.
So you want to make the motion?
Yeah, we'll just, this is an assumption of fire control duty effective that day.
Yeah, and done.
Okay. Well, then I'll make a motion that we, uh. Accept this assumption of fire control duty. Um, effective on twenty, the hours, twenty-three fifty-nine on eight-ten, twenty-twenty-five.
And authorize.
And authorize the chair to sign.
Okay, I second that.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Chris, again.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
I could have gone lead ops away, had you guys not jumped so hard and so quick.
Yeah, in all pre-evacuations, everything's been lifted, thirty-one hundred road is back open. Oak Mesa Road, which mainly is like an access road, there's seven acts is closed, but everywhere, otherwise everything else is.
Back open.
Back open, so.
Any, uh, issues with the stage two fire ban?
Not related to this fire, um, we've been. Dispatches over the weekend, um, had a lot of people openly burning. In fact, the Delta Fire Department responded out to Peach Valley for, uh, burn barrels and burn, and burn fits this morning. So there's still a lot of people that are openly burning. Out there, so we're encouraging people to review stage two, no open wood flame, no open flames. Pretty much only flames that are allowed under stage two are gas, grills, barbecues, stoves.
Do you hear from municipalities when they join in as well?
Here and there, um, Cedar Ridge has adopted stage two, Hoxkiss has adopted stage two. And Orchard City put in, passed a resolution when we went into stage one that they would follow us. So they're, uh, stage two, I've not heard from the city of Delta. Um, or, uh, Tannet Crawford or Payonah.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
What do you have, man? Okay, Terry, I'll turn the next item over to you for the appointment of the adjuster.
Thank you. Um, so yesterday we received a call, um, that Lisa Roberts has retired. If you remember earlier this year, we appointed her as our county arbitrator. Um, after scrapping for a little bit, we did come up with somebody, his name is JP Nicely. His, I think he has, um, family from Delta County that have been in this business for years. He is the president of Nicely and Associates of Grand Junction. Um, has tremendous experience in evaluating all types of properties. He has MAI, SRA, um, and even right-of-way, um, experience. So, um, I would like to have the board appoint him as our arbitrator. We do know we have one taxpayer that is in fact going to arbitration this year. That's why this is needing to be, be done in a timely manner because that has a thirty-day period on that one. So I am requesting that JP Nicely be pointed at Delta County Arbitrator.
Questions, Terry, on this one?
Does he live in?
He lives in Grand.
Why move that we, uh, appoint JP Nicely as Delta County's arbitrator?
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
That all for Commissioner Business?
It is.
Mr. Bear?
Thank you, good morning. I have two items that would be under executive session for the board, uh, this morning. These would be pursuant to advise the council, carer, revised statute twenty-four six, section twenty-four six, forward two, four, B. The items to be discussed, first of all, is a discussion and advice regarding Delta County Mining Project number twenty-four dash zero six three, which is the Hawk. Conditional use permit for an event venue. And secondly, discussion and advice regarding our revised statute, section twenty-nine, one, three oh four point five. Which is common, commonly referred to as the unfunded mandate statute. I would recommend the board going to executive session. For those purposes, for the purposes of advice to council. Accordingly, once in executive session. It is not necessary, my recommendation is that recording is not kept. Um, I'll also remind anyone who is present in the executive session to. Stick to the topics, let's just put it that way. So only the, the topics that are on the, uh, agenda is what should be discussed.
We do have an action item here, gentlemen.
I will move that the, we move into executive session to discuss the two aforementioned items.
And then we'll adjourn after the executive session.
Uh, we may not adjourn. We may have an action following that.
I don't believe there's any. I don't believe there's any action item.
Okay, then we will adjourn.
Okay, adjourn afterwards.
You may want to indicate who would be present. I think if you take the HAWK initial use permit first, some, I, I don't know who Sean wants to have in here. Definitely Sean would be in here, but, um, so. You know, typically list who's going to be president through.
And it'll be the three county commissioners, um, Robbie LaValle, Terry Stevenson, Lindsay Mitchell, John Bear, Sean Gardner, Everett Neal, Brittany Haning, Amy Perkins.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to kind of jump in there. I, I have no offense against Lindsay. I don't know that Lindsay needs to be in an executive session as public information officer. And I don't know what Amy would necessarily need to be in, in those either. But I don't.
We're going to ask that Amy and Lindsay excuse themselves from executive sessions, eh?
Okay.
So we got a motion on the floor.
All, all seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go done. We'll take a couple of minutes here and reset.